The time is six o'clock and we will call this meeting of the City of Dennison City Council meeting to order. It's Monday, April the 3rd, and our invocation tonight will be given by Reverend Todd Cato of the Park Avenue Church of Christ. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this city that we call home. We thank you for all the men and women who serve us. Father, we're especially prayerful for those who serve us at great risk and we pray for their protection and their wisdom. Father, we pray for this council, that you would give them clear minds as they deliberate the business of this day. We pray for your protection over them, that they will not be influenced in any evil, impure, selfish way. Father, we pray for all those in power, that we may use whatever power that you have given to us to be a blessing to other people, always aware of the powerless and the helpless and those who have no voice. Father, we're especially mindful this week as we lead into Easter. We're thankful for the events of this week that took place so many years ago, when you, in your son Jesus Christ, became one of us. Father, for the life that he lived, for the wisdom and the grace that he showed us, for the life that he gave, for our forgiveness, and for the triumphant resurrection which gives us hope of eternal life. Father, again, we're thankful for all that you give to us, and we pray your blessing of wisdom and favor upon us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. For our Pledge of Allegiance tonight, we have members of Troop 603, Boy Scouts of America, and that's Patrick Meska, Keith Connor, and Kelton Dusick. So if our scouts will come forward, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Gentlemen?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in Texas's flag.
Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We have a special recognition tonight, and at this time, we'll call on Assistant Chief Mark Eskamia to come forward.
Good evening, Pro Tem Mayor, Council. I'm here before you tonight to share some recent achievements from Dennison Fire Rescue. As you all may know, approximately about one year ago, April the 1st, DFR took EMS operations all back in-house. Since then, during this time, twenty-one, I repeat, twenty-one firefighters have attended paramedic school. Out of those ten, out of those twenty-one, only ten are left to graduate from Grayson College next month. Despite the major challenges needed to complete this task of resuming EMS operations, the men and women here at Dennison Fire Rescue accepted those challenges with open arms and have shown nothing but excellence and pride while doing so. As a testament to their dedication, we would like to share with you a recent recognition received by the American College of Cardiology. This was received in February. DFR received recognition from the ACC as a distinguished clinical team member in cardiac care with Texan Medical Center. DFR is the first agency in Grayson County to receive this resignation. So tonight, we also have a representative from TMC, the chest pain coordinator, Ms. Jessica, she would like to have a brief message tonight. Jessica, you want to come up?
Hello, Council. As mentioned, I am the chest pain coordinator at Texan Medical Center. American College of Cardiology accredited Texan Medical Center for our chest pain and heart attack care. That accreditation includes in the field by EMS. That means Dennison Fire is, plays a vital role in TMC's own accreditation. The ACC Partner in Care recognized them for their strong work and dedication to this community. The excellent care and communication that these men and women provide in the field allows TMC to intervene in a timely manner, saving vital heart muscle and improving patient outcomes. Here soon, you'll hear a story about Mrs. Massey. Mrs. Massey's story is a perfect example of the excellent care by the team in the field. There are many patients that I have seen personally, whose lives have been saved or outcomes have been improved because of the care in the field. And TMC is honored and grateful to continue and strengthen this partnership with Dennison Fire and Rescue. Thank you.
Thank you, TMC.
Thank you, Jessica. So with this recent achievement, it seemed fitting to take a minute to publicly recognize a few of our outstanding men and women from DFR. But before I do, I would like to share this story behind the recognition. On February the 2nd, at approximately 4:30 PM, this crew responded to a 911 call. When they arrived at the house, the patient was not breathing, had no pulse. They started CPR on the patient, they performed, they gave cardiac drugs, and, excuse me, CPR was performed while also administering cardiac drugs, and then shocking the patient two times with their cardiac monitor. No response, pulse, or breathing. They transported this patient to TMC emergency room while still performing lifesaving measures and shocking this patient a third time. As they arrived at TMC ER, this patient had a pulse back, started breathing on her own. That's when she was delivered to TMC, and they took over patient care. So, we are excited to announce that fourteen days later, after that night, she has been released from the hospital to resume a normal life. And we're going to introduce the crew members that were on that call tonight. I think it deserves a little recognition. So, guys, if you can hear me, I'm going to call your names out. I'll have you come up and stand up here, okay? Captain Paramedic, Landon Lindsay. Engineer Paramedic, Brendan McLeod. Firefighter Paramedic, Abby Lutmer. Firefighter Paramedic, Blake Barrett. And Firefighter Paramedic, Ryan Jackson. Why don't y'all stand up over here in front of everybody? Thank you. So I'm also excited to announce that we have that patient here, Ms. Ramona Massey. They gave us permission to share this story publicly, along with her husband, and we'd like to invite them up to meet the crew tonight, maybe get some pictures, if that's okay.
Could you come around and let's have a picture?
Want me to interview you?
Okay.
It is a reminder, days like today, why all of us here at DFR do what we do, and why we get up in the morning and come to work. We would also like to mention that no matter how hard we work, no matter how hard we train, we are not able to do, make, we are not able to make any of this possible without Team Dennison. Our IT department is always there, day and night, demanding, with, to meet our demanding needs for technology support. Our police department is always there to keep our crews safe on the streets. Our water department keeps our water coming to put fires out. Our street departments always keep us notified on construction and detours. Our fleet department to keep our vehicles on the road. Our ES department that deals with our difficult payroll system and benefits. Our administrators at city, our administrators and city staff that manage everything here at City Hall. And our elected officials that support us on having the right equipment we need to serve our citizens. And the list goes on. So those days, when any of you may question why you come to work, well, stories like this one about Ramona Massey is why we all work towards the same common goal to save our, to serve our community and citizens with pride and excellence, allowing them to have the best quality of life possible here at the City of Dennison. Thank you to all of our DFR members out there making these emergency calls. You deserve the great recognition for all the work you do out there, and thank you Team Dennison for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We rarely give enough credit to our first responders, and we thank each and every one of you, ladies and gentlemen, for taking great care of our city and helping us save lives, as you have done here. We thank you very much. Next on the agenda is item three, public comments. Citizens may speak on items listed on the agenda. A request to speak card should be completed and returned to the city clerk upon arrival and prior to the council reaching the public comment section of the agenda. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes unless otherwise required by law. Comments related to the public hearings listed below will be heard when the specific hearing starts. And do we have any, we have one, we have one request to speak card, and that will come later in the agenda. Next is item number four, the consent agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hander and a second by Councilmember Courtwright to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next item. We now move to the public hearings, item number five on the agenda, and we're going to start with, is Fanchin coming up? Okay, Fanchin's here, and I'll invite her to come to the speakers platform. We're on item A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance adopting water, wastewater, and roadway impact fees. Ms. Fanchin.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. I'm excited to present this to you tonight. We've been working on this for a while, so let's get started. So first, I'd like to introduce our team that helped us with this. We have John Ho from Hewitt Zollers, Angie Flores from Raftellus, Joe Williams from Raftellus, and Krista for Williams from Raftellus. They're standing in the back here. They helped us with our calculations and helped us with this whole project and helped put the impact fee report in your packet together. So this is just a quick overview of the process. We started this project in July of last year, actually, when the council awarded or engaged Hewitt Zollers to do the impact fee study. We had a public hearing in February of this year for the CIP and land use assumptions as well. I think that was the last time we talked about this at council. So let's go back and we'll just look at this quickly. Our land use assumptions that we've used for the project, this is required, all of these items are required under Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 395. That's what governs the impact fee study and process. So these are the population projections that we used and also our land use assumptions map. This is our water and wastewater service area. Under Chapter 395, it is the city limits and the ETJ. So let's talk about units quick. When we talk about water units for the purpose of impact fees, we're talking about the number of water meters and the size of water meters, and we use living unit equivalent. This is just a refresher. We've seen our ten-year CIPs a couple of times now. So this is our water CIP. This is the cost of our projected development numbers, the infrastructure that we need to put in the ground and our plants across Dennison to serve our population projections over the next ten years. So for wastewater units, it's a little more straightforward than the water units. It's just the number of connections, so the number of taps. And again, a quick review of our ten-year wastewater CIP. Our roadway service area is a little bit different. Per Chapter 395, it must be in the city limits and it has to, and it cannot exceed six miles. So there are a couple of ancillary parts of Dennison that were left out because there were no capital improvement projects in those areas. That is something that we can change the next time we do an impact fee study. And for the units for roadway, it's based on the travel demand factor. It's what type of use the project is, and how many trips are generated. So our little, our little illustration, a grocery store is going to generate a lot more trips than a single family home, so we take that into account. Just a quick snapshot of our roadway CIP. So, now we're moving forward with what we're here to actually discuss tonight. All of these items come together. We look at the land use assumptions and the ten-year CIP. This tells us what we're going to need to put in the ground, on the ground, at our plants, in the way of infrastructure to serve our population projections based on where they are in Dennison. We also recognize, and the state recognizes, under Chapter 395, that there are some inherent benefits to the community from development. So they have us take the true cost of a development, the true cost of its impact on our water, wastewater, and roadway, and just automatically give a 50% credit. That covers the increase in property taxes, increase in people shopping local, all of those benefits that development brings to the community. And that's what gives us our maximum allowable fee. At different times throughout this entire process, we've looked at different communities in Texas and compared all of the different impact fees that communities had when they first implemented impact fees, that they have now, what they've gone down from, what they've gone up from. The biggest takeaway that we can see is that communities do what's best for them at that point in time. There are different revenue sources, there are different levels of build-out, there are different projections for build-out for each community when they look at impact fees. So I wanted to address that. The revenue from impact fees can be used for capital projects. So all of these different capital improvement plans that we've talked about, the water, wastewater, and roadway, impact fee revenue can be used to fund those. So under the study that we've completed, that's in your packet, these are our maximum allowable fees. This is based on the ten-year land use assumptions, the CIP, and then our population projections with that 50% credit already added. That's where we get these numbers. So this would be the highest that the council could adopt. So there are some different things to consider when we're looking at impact fees. When you have a higher fee, you get more cost recovery. So this, this $23,000, each unit has about that, actually double that, because we've already applied the 50% credit, impact on our water, wastewater, and roadway systems. So we get more cost recovery if we have a higher impact fee. Development is also paying for its impact on the system. We have to do these projects regardless of if we have these fees or not to serve the population that's coming to Dennison, the development, the redevelopment that we're seeing. So development is helping pay for itself. It could potentially make Dennison seem less competitive, though, or any community that has a higher impact fee. If we adopt a lower impact fee, there's less cost recovery, ratepayers are supplementing development's impact, because again, these improvements still need to be made, but it could seem more competitive. We have weekly development meetings with developers, builders, homeowners, and one of the first questions they always ask is, what are your impact fees? And we have to say, well, we don't really have any, but that's only partially true. So if a developer is putting in five homes on a sewer line that is substandard, undersized, collapsing manholes, any of these things that we've seen throughout town over the years, they have to help us make improvements to that system before they can tie in. That is based on a case-by-case basis. It's based on us having to do research into the condition and the capacity of the system. Impact fees take all that away. It's one flat fee per lot, per unit, based on what you're putting there. It's something that's fair, it's transparent, and developers can look at those fees ahead of time and take them into account in their development costs. So, our recommendation, the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, at their meeting on January 12th earlier this year, recommended that the council adopt the maximum allowable fee, but direct staff to assess 50% of the fee for water, wastewater, and roadway. The difference here between the adopt, adoption number and the assessment number is that in the future, should it warrant it, the council can take action and adopt up to the maximum allowable fee without having to do another impact fee study. This is what those numbers look like side by side. So again, the recommendation from the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee is that the council adopt the maximum allowable fee, but assess 50% of that for water, wastewater, and roadway. I do want to note that this is for a one-inch residential, single-family home. That's what these numbers are. So, moving forward, the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee will receive reports from staff twice each year on the impact fee program. We will present an update on the capital improvement projects and also on the collection of revenue, what that revenue looks like, what it's being used for. The committee can recommend that council reduce the fee, change the fee, conduct a new study, or make other changes within the program. The council has the option to have a new impact fee study done at any time. If it turns out that what we do tonight isn't what you envision it doing in the next year, in the next six months, in the next two years, we're free to go ahead and do another study. Chapter 395 of the Texas Local Government Code requires that we do a new study every five years minimum. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you very much, Fanchin. This is a public hearing, and at this time, we would allow those of you who would like to speak in, on this matter, to approach the speakers platform. We ask that you try to keep your comments to three minutes. The other favor we'd like to ask is that if someone else has already made your point, that you allow them to, to, maybe you could pass on your turn. So, anyway, we'll open the public hearing, and the only request to speak card that we received was from Bill Wostowski from Dallas, Texas. So Mr. Wostowski, if you'd like to come forward, we'd be happy to hear from you.
Bill Wostowski, CenterPoint Commercial Properties. I actually live in Pottersboro, but my office is in Dallas. Just kind of was made aware that we're, this was really pushing forward towards getting impact fees, which we deal with a lot of communities that already have impact fees. Kind of called around today, seemed like some people were a little set back or didn't have all the information they needed on this, this topic. So I just had like eight questions, and just like to see what we could do to get some of those answered for everybody, because there were several landowners I talked to, several developers, and there wasn't a lot of answers, and they didn't know a lot of the facts. One, how were the public meetings advertised? I was told there was two public meetings, which we weren't aware of, and I have nearly a little bit over a hundred acres listed in the City of Dennison. Several people didn't feel like they knew about the meetings either. Two, what developers and large landowners or real estate professionals were consulted for opinions and suggestions during the process of considering the impact fees? Three, what actual comps, and what, from what cities did we get these impact fees? I know some of these people, some groups have adopted impact fees and they have a set, but I'd like to also know what their actual impact fees are that they charge. Did the council consult with anyone to gaze the impact that this could have on development? How it could possibly slow the process, or could it spark the process and make things better by getting some infrastructure in it? If you did not, could consult more than just a couple or a few developers, since we don't know really who was consulted, why were more not consulted with? There's a lot of real estate professionals have a lot of, a lot of land listed, there were several major developers that acted like they didn't know anything about this. And how will these affect future retail developments? And this is kind of a two-part question, is existing tenants that need, existing buildings that need to be re-tenanted, how is that going to impact, is there going to be an impact fees on, on re-tenanting those buildings? And how will it affect pad sites and maybe grocery store developments, a mixed use? And are there any alternative plans to these impact fees at this time? That's all the questions I have.
Remind me what your first question was again, please.
One, how were the public meetings advertised? Just there were some questions on that, a lot of, some of these owners are out of town. Some people didn't know that there, there was a big consideration for the impact fees.
All right. Thank you very much, and we'll try to get some answers here. Could I invite Fanchin and the consultants? Maybe, maybe you could come up for a few minutes. Okay, as far as the advertising, we publish city council meetings each Friday, and they are available to the public at any time. We publish on Friday, and then the meetings are held the following Monday. I don't know of any other way to do that other than a public advertisement that we do. The second was, who all, who all were the consultants? And so maybe we could address that point.
Sure, sure. And with, with that first question, so tonight is a public hearing to consider impact fees, and we also had the public, I'm sorry, the public hearing to consider the land use assumptions and ten-year CIP. We both, or for both of those meetings, we published a 30-day notice in the Herald Democrat, 30 days ahead of, of this meeting and the meeting to consider the CIP and LUAA. Under the statute, under Texas Local Government Code 395, we are required Under the statute, under Texas Local Government Code 395, we are required to have at least two members of the development community on the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, and we were able to do that.
Fanchin, in addition, all of our, all of our committee meetings were also advertised, isn't that correct?
They were all published to the city's website, yes. Published agendas on the city's website.
Okay. And then you asked about comps. And I think one thing we learned in the committee meetings was that there aren't apples and apples out there. Each community pretty much does what they want to or what they need to do in the, in their own CIP program. There is no standard formula for each city to go by. What we do have as standard is the state regulation, the 395.
Yeah, any, any city that's adopted impact fees will have gone through this similar process, so their impact fees will be based on the, their capital improvement advisory committee and also their tenure land use assumptions and their tenure CIPs.
And then, did we consult with developers on the impact up and down of the, of the additional fees?
So probably outside of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, I'm not aware of any other consultation that was done. We did work with Hewitt Zollers and Raftellus, Raftellus who have done similar projects throughout the state of Texas, and so they were able to give us some insight. We also did quite a bit of research into what other cities have done previously.
And how will it affect future retail tenants, re-tenanting, and pad sites and mixed use? I think that was the fifth question.
So as far as re-tenanting goes, if, if additional demand is not placed on the system, so say there's a leased space, they have one sewer tap, they have one water meter, they won't need to pay those fees. It's just for increase in use. So if it was a leased space and they were going to split it in half, add another water meter, add another sewer tap, that's when these fees would be triggered.
Okay. Do you all have any other comments on those questions? I mean, roughly, how many people have you served in consulting on, on things like this? Roughly?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, we have worked on a number of cities along with Raftellus, and so as Fanchin mentioned, there, each city has their water, sewer, roadway, all published. And I think the, the recommended fees that we have presented this evening is comparable to many of those cities or towns. Now, are they the same? Of course not. As Fanchin had said earlier, Dennison is unique. The, the CIP is, you know, different from other cities. The population projection is different. The land use size is different. So, so all those components went into the calculations. So we cannot really, you know, recommend you to say, well, you know, we should use, you know, next-door neighbors or some other cities, municipalities. So, so that's, that's what we did as a team.
Thank you very much. All right. Let's go to the audience in general. Anyone want to come up and, and make a comment? Please state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Jonathan Earnhardt, Wenton, South Houston. I'll probably have that memorized by now. All right, so I got a few things I wanted to go over, but some of the big, we're trying to apartments here, plus we have 100-acre development going on. Just if we're able to do the max, or if we decide to do the max units, which I'm sure we're not, you're talking $24 million in impact fee just on that project alone. You take an apartment that we're looking at, it's 10 acres, 200 units. That's the maximum we allow here in density there. So you take that, you add the land value, you add the impact fees of $2.4 million, you're at $27,000 a unit, just land costs and impact fees. Our partners, we were on the phone with Chris earlier today with Cross Developer, Cross Development, and a few others, and the one going up in Salina, they charged us a fee of $3,000 a unit. So even though their max unit is, charge is stated as 11,000, they don't implement those fees that way. Chris wasn't aware, and I think he was on the council for this, how you can even adjust those downs, but somehow they are, and they're not being charged that way. Sherman's is, I can't tell you, they just recently raised theirs, but I think it's like 5,500 to 8,500. We just have two receipts here, we just platted there, they're charging us $625 per lot. So even you're using these as comparables, it's not what these people are actually charging. So if I take and go and going to do an apartment complex here, of course, we're going to go by numbers. We know, we're fully aware, I go to every budget meeting, I'm here at every meeting. We're fully aware, we need that infrastructure, the need for the city, but as a developer, as especially the big developers that are going to come in, they're going to skip over, and then we're going to lose the majority of it and hurt our own land values, then our tax basis goes down. I think we're jumping at a high step and will scare a lot of people off and probably hurt us more than we think. I mean, because we will definitely, with that rate, be higher than anyone north of the metroplex. I mean, I think Fort Worth has some of the highest in Texas, and people are avoiding that like the plague. But, um, so I think these will have implemented, different things that cause, and I, that we don't even know of or will see that effect. So I think, you know, starting, we were, I was all for, we never object to it. I seen it in the budget meetings, but when we first mentioned it in the first budget meeting, I think like a year and a half ago or something, we said we were going to do like 1,000 to 2,500 and do a study to figure out which number would be go, and this is just way higher than that. So of course, we didn't object on the way until we saw it here today. So I just really ask council to take time and see, see what the effects will be. We, we know the need is there, but we need to make sure we don't crash our, our growth, keep it at a steady growth, and we can slow it down, but really stop, and it would just hurt us all. And I think that's the biggest thing I had on that. Any questions for me?
Do you mind if I make a comment? So Jonathan, and to your point, I did do a little bit more research after we got off the phone, and, and I did enjoy that time. I appreciate your time visiting about this. The, the one thing I think that, that most of the developer calls that I got over this last week is that we're kind of missing, we're only, we're comparing apples and oranges. So everybody goes and grabs the road use fee, that's the 650. So I went into Sherman's website and actually ran my own application for a single-family, multifamily. And so, you know, to your point, if I choose, there's four different zones in Sherman, if I choose one of their zones, some of them, there's, the lowest is the 650. The highest comes in at 1650 on a single-family road use fee per, or impact fee. But then what everybody misses is that there's an additional two, two fees, the water impact fee and then the wastewater, which those, depending on where, you know, which municipality you're applying to, are hidden in either the meter cost or in an actual direct impact fee. So I went and looked at Salina's as well. So I think the, to the point, the 3,000 our fee, I think we're looking at a portion of the fee, but it's really not because it's getting blended into some of the other. I think you mentioned maybe it could have been tagged onto the building permit fee, you know? And so I think that we're, what we're trying to do here tonight is we're trying to outline, we're just trying to make it as clear as it can be, as far as like, this is what we expect on a one-inch, not a three-quarter inch, but a one-inch, single-family, which should actually be less than this on a three-quarter inch supply. And so I don't disagree with you in that they're higher, but, but to your point is that if you actually were to go and, and separate out all the fees that everybody's charging, I think we're a lot closer than you think. Not necessarily, maybe it's not Sherman, maybe it's not Salina, maybe it's Prosper, maybe it's, you know, the different cities, everybody has their different needs. The biggest difference, and I know we talked about this a little bit, but I say this just for the public, you know, one of the things that, that our staff is alluding to as far as how every city has their unique exposures, right? Whether it's the number of street miles that you maintain, whether, you know, we, in Dennison, we're blessed, we actually have a lot of street miles that are maintained by Tech Stop. That's good and bad. We're not in control of a lot of those major corridors, but at the same time, we're not obligated to maintain them, so that's a benefit. The other part of that, though, is that, you know, whether your sales tax base is very robust, like our neighbor to the south, or we're trying to grow our sales tax base, you know, we're driven by ad lorm tax on property values. So that's one of the challenges, is that our impact fees may appear higher because we don't have the sales tax to offset those, right? It's not a complaint, it's just the fact. The other thing is, is that because of the fact that Dennison has been on the decline population-wise since the 70s, now we're seeing this uptick and this uptick in values. We talked about our median income is coming up. It's not that we want to slow growth. I mean, I continue, I told you professionally, I want to continue to see developers, you guys are my clients. I've got clients that are builders, I've got clients that are contractors. I want to personally take my city council hat off and say, I want to personally see all of you thrive, and I want to, I don't want to do anything that would damage the growth of Dennison for sure. But the one challenge is, I also, I put my city council hat back on and say, if we've got a crisis in terms of maintaining our infrastructure, how do I fund this? Okay? So from a budgetary management standpoint, I don't see any other options, you know? A gentleman over there asked what our alternatives are. Well, the state has outlined what our alternatives are, and then alternatives are impact fees, right? I mean, that's the only way we can recoup some of those development costs. So it's not that we're not sensitive to the impact on you personally, no pun intended, but the fact is that Fanchin already outlined that we're already only assessing 50% of the allowable, so when we, even when we look at, if it's a 23,000, we're really talking about a $46,000 impact on the city, we're looking at 50, and then we're going 50 of that, so effectively 25% recovery effort, you know? So that's one of the challenges, but, but I do want to highlight, just because there's been a ton of communication, and, and I do think that it's very difficult to compare apples to apples in terms of what everybody's charging, just because every city has a unique approach in how they apply those fees. You know, maybe our building permits are less, maybe our, you know, water taps are less or more. Well, now this is going to try to streamline that for you, so that you as the developer do have a clear understanding of, of what your costs could possibly be. But that's all, Mr. Frye. I wanted to clarify that, but I do appreciate your time, and I do appreciate all of your efforts and research and communication, so kudos to you on that. Thank you.
Yeah, so some of, you know, definitely we need, we, we need them, there's not a doubt about that, but a lot of people, no matter what, we don't have the tax bases or different things to bring that into cover for that. A developer, especially an out-of-town developer, is not going to calculate or care that in, it's going to be bottom line. On top of the fact that if ours are the highest, we also, of all North Texas, have pretty much the lowest median income of like 26,000 based on 2020, where these other cities have a much higher. And I mean, you, you compare these to the cost per acre or their median income or almost anything, you know, it's 10% based of their median income, where this will be five times our median income. So it's just, it makes a big difference on the way you look at that also. And why this matters so much is because those numbers are used, first thing you look at to build apartment complexes, you have them run the numbers of your rental that you can do based on their income of the city. So our rent rates are going to be lower here, now our impact fees are going to be higher. Our total door cost between door and impact fees could be that twice as much as another city that makes twice or three times as much income. They're, they're of course not going to move here. We're having the biggest problem trying to do Salina right now because we can't prove the income, even though we have, know they have so much growth there. And so it may just fail, even though the need is so extreme up there, and I just don't want to become that same situation here, you know? If we can pass it through and it goes through and it works, that, that would be good, but as a developer, I just don't see, I'd see it slowing a lot of development down and lowering our costs or value of land here. So just wanted y'all to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate it.
Mayor Pro Tim, if I may, just some factual information. I happen to serve as the city attorney for Salina. Their impact fees are total for all three are $15,100, and they issue over 100 building permits every month.
That's good information. Thank you. Next, anybody else want to speak?
Well, and to that comment, second to Julie's, just real quick, one of the other things I discovered when I was doing my homework is that a lot of these rates were adopted back pre-2020 or in the middle of 2020. I noticed that significantly, especially in those communities that we're behind in terms of timeframe implementing these. And so, but knowing what we know, that a, that a fee study is required every five years, I do expect in the next 12 to 24 months, you're going to see a significant change in the impact fees to our neighbors to the south based on actual costs today. So we are, we will have the most current rates for construction costs of this maintenance as 2023 rates, but we all know what has significantly changed since 2020 in terms of construction costs and overall expenses to the city. So I do think that's having a big impact on when we try to compare kind of apples and oranges.
Have, yes, sir, come up, please. Please state your name and address for us, please, for the record.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Eley, E-L-E-Y. My address, 10804 Sexton Drive in McKinney, Texas, although I own 35 properties here in town. Turned in three building permits about 10 days ago. My GC had said we better get it in fast. Haven't yet turned in building permits on the other 32. My one request I would respectfully put forth is for you to run an econometric model based on data from developers about how the city revenue will drop from declines in building permits, to see if this is actually a net revenue positive for the city or not. I don't know the answer to that. I'm not an econometric modeler anymore in my life, I used to be, but I think it's worth running that model if the desire is to gain revenue. The next point that I'd like to make is that at the flip of a keyboard wire transfer, capital which funds development seeks the best risk-adjusted return. So it's not always what I as a developer or my colleagues in the room as developers want to do, it's what our lenders do. And even on the three building permits I turned in 10 days ago, that's being financed by a bank here in this city. The deal was tiny enough, skinny enough, that it barely got approved based on an appraisal of what the houses would sell for and based on construction cost and land cost. If we put another 11,700 per door on that loan app, the VP over there at First United wouldn't have approved that particular loan. And at the same time, you know, my land in Whitesboro, my land in other places doesn't necessarily have this kind of cost. So consider that capital is, is very fluid, then it does pursue risk-adjusted returns. My last point is, I, I'm very proud and excited about the changes that I've seen in, in Dennison in the six years that I've been operating here, and I just had a wonderful snack at a relatively new eating establishment next door. What I'm not thinking that I'm seeing is the kind of executive and mid-upper management jobs that pay the kind of salaries to add to the multiple chain of events that we've had when we got rid of Infill and when we got rid of 50-foot duplexes and when we mandated more garages, and now we're adding this on. The restaurant workers don't have this kind of income. And I would implore the city to consider at the same time as ratcheting up the development standards, to consider maybe trying to pursue some of those upper-level paying jobs that right now go to Frisco or, or Plano. I think that would be beneficial to support these kinds of effort. Last but not least, thanks for your time, and consider doing a partial, a phase in rather than all at once overnight. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Eley.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay. Okay. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Josh Massey, twenty-two, one-five Highland Park Drive in Dennison, Texas. So I would add to what Jonathan Earnhardt has said. If you are a citizen of Dennison, and you believe that the downtown is the heart of our city, and we have created significant incentive packages to grow our downtown, revitalize our downtown, and redevelop the residential sides of our downtown, an eleven thousand dollar impact fee would change the return on the investment for redeveloping our loft communities by significant single digits. And we have created significant incentive grants to offset that exact risk profile. This would delete the impact of all of those existing, if we were to assume the assessed limit here. So I mirror the previous, that staged in, and I also mirror the Earnhardt's position that this is necessary. So it, it has my support, I just, I feel like we need to make sure it's not going to kill what we're trying to achieve as a city and as a downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So I have, I have a question made for the consultants about this. So, so these impact fees, from what I understand, are for new builds, correct? So, let's take that question. Someone has a building downtown with a loft up top that just needs to be renovated, essentially to become livable in, or what?
It's, it's not a loft to start with. You are recreating new space, so when the permitting was required, when I did mine, we had to consider it as a new construction, and then they were allowed to operate on some of the inspections as a remodel to meet energy code, where the code for historic renovation did not allow us to adopt current construction techniques on historic national park service property. So we juxtapose those two lanes, but it was considered a new build.
So with that, so from what I understand, from his questions, then lofts being built downtown would incur this impact fee, is that correct?
If the loft was needing a larger meter, if it's already on the system with the meter, then, and that meter is, is sized correctly to serve the new construction, then a new impact fee would not need to be paid.
So as long as the meter doesn't need to be changed, there is no?
Increase in size is the key.
Increased in size.
There are no water meters, or electric meters, or gas meters, or sewer lines going to the upstairs floors on most of these properties, unless they have had a previous remodel that included a loft, say the Beryl Building, for instance.
So it would need a larger meter.
Yeah, it would just be when, if there is existing water or sewer, if it needs to be upsized. So if there was one sewer tap at the building, and they needed to add another one, they would need to pay for that other sewer tap, then yes, it would trigger that fee.
They, they make you put a new water meter in for every unit you put in, that's a requirement. So if you put a loft in there, you have to put eight meters required. Just on my building, when they redid the street, just because I told them they have a new future meter, we did all new, a new two-inch line downstairs, wasn't, wasn't even required, but you had to upgrade, and then they did a whole new service lines beside, so each meter would be individual, each loft is individually a meter, and that's been a requirement for as long as I've been building. Each, each unit has to have its own meter.
So, so in this case, so with those lofts, if they have to add a meter, then the impact fee goes into effect?
That's correct. It'll also depend on the timing. So in this next phase of D three, we're actually building in some additional meters and some additional sewer taps. So hopefully, we've been meeting with property owners and, and discussing their different needs and their different plans. It's in the city's best interest, it's in their best interest. We don't need someone coming in and tearing up our new sidewalk and our new pavers, three months after we get them in, because they need to add another loft, or whatever their long-term plans are for the building. So in situations like that, where the city is taking that project on, then that would be something that we would take care of. So it'll, it just kind of depends on the timing.
I apologize, but I think it's worth pointing out, we should look at the ordinance that's being considered, not the consulting report. The consulting report doesn't come along, right? The ordinance does. And I see the word reconstruction, I don't see necessarily the word new meter, and so I throw that out as maybe a point of clarification.
Thank you. Or are there questions, or comments from the group? Yes, sir, please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Carlos Francin, East Florence, here in Dennison. I would just like to, to mention a couple things. We mentioned places like Salina and Sherman, which has service areas. And the reason those are important is, part of section three ninety-five of the local government code that was left out was what you cannot pay for. So if you look at Sherman, their service area number three, which is the area east of Highway seventy-five, it's older, it's like what you see on our east side, south side, and current north side, they get a seventy-five percent break off their impact fees. Salina has an old central town, they get a break. So that's really important. I don't like the fact that this impact fee is over every development, no matter what area it is. And that's important, because this money can only be spent for C I P projects, and seventy-five percent of them will not be on the east side. So, in all reality, this is not an impact fee on developers, builders, or anybody else other than the customer. You're, you're the residents that you guys represent, that's who pays it. With the abolishment of the infill district, the mandating of garages, then you guys didn't like garages, so you made them change, you made lead walks, all that ended up, I did not lose a dime, I built houses, the customer paid for. And so you're talking about, we were once made headlines over two years ago as being the most affordable housing in the nation, one area. And in two years, we have completely eliminated affordable housing. We're talking with the, with the passage of this, a twenty to thirty thousand dollar increase on what was an affordable home. So keep that in mind. I'm not paying for it, your residents that elect you are. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other comments from anyone? We, one of the major issues we have here, here is capacity. Oh, yes, ma'am, sorry. No other questions or comments, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Our major issue is capacity. And we, when we have these extreme heat days in August, we run very, very close to maxing out our entire water system. So, to me, we have a capacity issue. It's not that we want to charge you, we, we don't have the funds with the city to just build new streets and, and add sewer and water. That's the issue, we are maxed out, we are an older community, the water lines in the middle of that street out there are over a hundred years old. We've just not had the benefit of a bunch of extra sales taxes, where we could apply those in different areas and try to help ourselves. We're getting there, I know many of us are, are trying as hard as we can to develop new sales tax revenues, but it's, it's going to come with time. So the issue to me would be, if you add the new product with lower water pressure, or maybe even we have to do some kind of rationing, that doesn't make sense to me. So we have to figure out a way to get our capacity to where it can serve our entire community and our entire citizens. We'd love, we, you know, we'd like to see quality development in our community, there's no question about that. Many of you in this room have developed quality projects for us. We thank you, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. But we have a capacity issue, and the way we have to approach this, we think, is through impact fees. So that's my comment. Other comments from the council?
So saying that it would only impact one side of town isn't really what would happen, because with our water and wastewater, that's going to impact us all. Even though it's new, you can't use it to fix existing infrastructure, but we're going to have to add on to these plants, we're going to have to completely build parts of them, and that would benefit all of us. My, my question was, I, I did like, I was trying to write your name down, really quick, Mr. Francin? I did like his idea about different zones, maybe to help encourage different products that we need in different areas of town. I don't know, Ms. Board, if that's something that we could amend later, if we approve now, or if that's something you have to do from the beginning?
That is something that could be amended, and as you grow and are larger, may naturally happen. I think the, the consultants that were paid to do this study evaluate a lot of data, and evaluate a lot of costs, you know, for the, the new infrastructure that's going to be needed. And if that data warranted service areas at that time, I feel confident, at this time, I feel confident that that's what they would be recommending, but it, it wasn't supported by the data in the study. But that doesn't mean it won't change in the future, and you will have different areas that would warrant different cost.
Other comments? At this time, the chair would call for a motion.
Mayor Protem, I move to adopt the maximum allowable fee for water, wastewater, and roadway impact fees, and direct staff to assess fifty percent of the maximum allowable fee.
Say. So any other discussion from council? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, thank you very much, and I want to thank each of you for taking your time to come down and, and visit with us tonight, and we're going to keep moving forward as best we can, and thank you again for, for coming. The next item on the agenda is item five B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on ordinance for the city-initiated request to amend the twenty eighteen comprehensive plan of the city of Dennison, case number two zero two three dash zero one nine C P. And I believe this is going to be Diane York, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, good evening, Mayor Protem and council. We're excited to bring forth this item to you tonight. As you all are aware, the planning staff hired John Webb and Phyllis Gerald as consultants to assist us with some ordinance rewrites, and, as well as some updates and amendments to the two thousand eighteen comprehensive plan. And tonight, John and Phyllis will be presenting those proposed amendments and proposed updates. So I will ask John Webb to come up.
Thank you. Good evening, John.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. On behalf of Phyllis Gerald, I appreciate the honor to be here tonight. I express our appreciation to the time that you spent working with us this past summer on some work sessions, where we discussed about housing issues currently we're facing in Dennison, as well as future housing. I think at that time, we discovered that growth is coming. As I noted in the report, just in twenty twenty-two alone, there were twenty-two hundred and fifty new homes built between Melissa and Sherman. So in just one year, about six thousand people moved to the area just south of us. So we began those discussions with you, and with the Planning Zoning Commission. Much appreciation to Diane and Mary Tate for their help during the process, and again, to the Planning Zoning Commission. So, you know, some of the feedback that we talked about very early on, with some of the input received from you, and I'm not going to go over these verbatim, but, you know, you have a very good dialogue with the Dennison School District, they understand that the growth is coming. We want to continue support, and Phyllis will talk about this a bit more, about supporting all types of housing, in addition to attainable housing. The term is really not affordable, it's attainable, and Phyllis will, will focus a little more on that. We want to make sure that we adopt policies that continue to provide new housing that's attainable to all income groups of the city. Certainly, you have a great reputation on your green space and trail development, so the need was there to continue that. And of course, with the previous action that you took, needed infrastructure improvements. And again, there was a lot of input about keeping the small-town feel. From a planner that's worked in cities, I've worked with impact fees in cities for the past thirty years, and I think what you did tonight is extremely commendable, because it's been absolutely part and parcel in my career to accommodate growth through impact fees. So, my portion is relatively short, Phyllis has the more important section on housing, but just touching on the demographics. As we've talked about before, the city grew, had added more people between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-three than we did for the previous ten years. We, it was a point eight percent growth rate from twenty ten to twenty twenty, and since twenty twenty, up to twenty twenty-three, we've grown to about three point two percent annual growth rate. So our estimated population as of January was a little under twenty-seven thousand, and we probably passed that twenty-seven thousand now for the city. So one thing that we were challenged with was look at future growth coming in the city. We ran two estimates. One, we feel is fairly conservative, continue around that three percent annual growth rate that would get us to a population of just under fifty thousand by the year twenty fifty. We believe, though, considering the desirability of your properties that you have in Dennison, that continued march, in the northward march along the seventy-five corridor, just the beauty of the land that you have in the city, and more importantly, how you, how and when utilities are delivered to those properties, that you could easily get to sixty-six thousand people by the year twenty fifty. So that is an annual growth rate of five to six percent, that is fairly significant. Even a three percent annual growth rate is, is something to be concerned with and be addressed, but if you reach the five to six percent annual growth rate, that is something that I think that it'll affect all departments in the city. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to Phyllis, and she will kind of run through some of the housing policies and programs that we put in plan.
Welcome, Phyllis.
Good evening, council, it's a pleasure to be here again before you, and as, as John stated, we've had a lot of good input from the Planning Zoning Commission, City Council on these proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan, and tonight, I'm going to cover the housing section. The major impetus for these amendments was housing, and the challenges that y'all are seeing with new growth, new subdivisions coming in, as well as continuing infill housing opportunities. So, the policies that we're recommending, there are really two major themes that they hit upon. One is to support new housing of all types, this would be single-family apartments, town homes, at a variety of price points that are attainable for residents of all ages and income. And we've talked a lot about senior housing, and first-time homebuyers, renters, owners, trying to really address all of these different needs that your citizens are going to have for housing, and as they age, and want, and move through their family formation, and then on into the senior years. The other major theme is to also conduct a parallel effort to preserve and enhance existing neighborhoods, and the city has started programs to do this. We are recommending some enhancements to those that we think will help neighborhood and community cohesion, and improvements to those, to your older neighborhoods, that will also make those continue to be attractive for new investment. So I'll go through some of the specific recommendations that we're making. For the land, future land use map, we are recommending a new subcategory of rural residential. And this would be a designation for areas that, where it's unlikely there will ever be sanitary sewer service, and you're going to then, of course, have larger lots that are appropriate in those areas, a more rural, more open space type of development. Continue to provide infrastructure incentives for infill housing, and this just makes sense to use areas and build in areas where there's already infrastructure. There are older parts of the city where the infrastructure's not there, but there are streets planted and lots planted, and one of the things that the city could consider is helping to provide infrastructure to open up those areas for new housing. We talked some about downtown Dennison and all the good things that are happening on Main Street, and one of the recommendations is to identify properties that are on side streets in downtown that might be appropriate for housing. Really focus commercial, restaurants, retail, office uses on Main Street, and then look at some of those side streets to add residents that will then help support the Main Street businesses. Consider allowing what we call missing-middle housing in neighborhoods, this would be garage apartments, backyard cottages, maybe duplexes, town homes, fourplexes, again, to include more housing in existing neighborhoods to address affordability, and these are some of the ways to- these are some of the ways that cities are starting to look at doing that. Then support tax credit proposals and partner with nonprofit builders to provide both family and senior housing. We've talked some about the low-income tax credit program that the state administers, and how this is a way to especially provide affordable senior housing, which is a great need in the city, given that Dennison has a higher proportion of seniors than the state overall. I skipped ahead. In terms of preserving and supporting existing neighborhoods, we are recommending that the city identify additional resources for home repair and rehabilitation programs. And I know the city has started to devote some of your community development block grant funds to this. What we hear from staff is that it's not sufficient, really, to address the need, that there are a lot of people who own their homes, who don't have the funds to put a new roof on, or to replace the sewer line that's collapsed, and things like that. So this is going to be an ongoing challenge for the city, and one where there are some opportunity to identify new, additional funding for those programs. In existing neighborhoods, we think it's important to replace and upgrade infrastructure, and I know the city's starting to do this. We think that will encourage reinvestment in neighborhoods. People coming in, they see the city making investments in the neighborhood, and then they feel safe that they can then buy a house and make improvements to that. We are recommending that you emphasize sidewalk construction, and also safe walks to school, because we heard during, from the Planning Commission and Council, that this was a concern. You have neighborhood schools, but there's not always a sidewalk there for kids to walk safely to those. Another program to consider would be a neighborhood capacity program. This could be helping neighborhoods create voluntary resident associations, business associations, organize neighborhood cleanup days, and just help neighborhoods understand who to contact if there are code enforcement issues or crime issues, really help to educate them on city services. And there are a number of cities in the area that have programs of this type that would be good models for the city to consider. And then finally, dedicate funding to consist of home repair and rehabilitation to help seniors age in place. There's a need for all types of senior housing, new senior housing in the city, everything from independent living to long-term care, but most seniors want to age in place, and I think, you know, there's opportunity for the city to help them do so. In terms of new subdivisions, we are recommending that you add a section to the Comprehensive Plan that talks about creating neighborhoods rather than separate, isolated subdivisions. And these would be connected by streets and trails. They would include a mix of single-family housing within townhouses, patio homes, and apartments. It could be a smaller percentage of a neighborhood. These neighborhoods should be linked with trails, and also given an opportunity to locate parks that are planned out already in your Parks and Trail Master Plan. It's also an opportunity to coordinate cooperation between the city and the school district and developers to incorporate school sites in the neighborhoods. Dennison has a lot of undeveloped land, and you have a great opportunity to start now to try to build on this neighborhood concept. We've also included some considerations for the Planning and Zoning Commission, City Council, and developers to use when they bring forward a zoning case, you're considering a zoning case, in terms of using planned development zoning to accommodate innovative development types, also to incorporate a mix of single-family housing and duplexes. These could be transition zones, but also appropriate for infill housing locations. Locating multifamily development throughout the city in residential settings, but not in non-residential industrial areas, or in the city in center of single-family neighborhoods or along freeways. We think your land along US 75 is best reserved for economic development, commercial purposes, and not housing, and really not appropriate for multifamily along that corridor. And then also, limit concentrations of multifamily units to no more than 450 units. This could be separated by two major thoroughfares, but again, multifamily is an important component of housing in the city, but you also don't want to have too large concentration in one area. And then finally, we've included some questions for evaluating residential zoning proposals, and this would be, does it comply with Comprehensive Plan recommendations? Is adequate public infrastructure in place to accommodate the proposed housing development? And if not, who pays for the required upgrades? Will the proposed change enhance the site and be compatible with surrounding areas? Does the proposed development contribute to the city's long-term economic well-being, and then, of course, compliance with Comprehensive Plan? The Planning and Zoning Commission considered these amendments at their meeting last week, and did recommend that the City Council approve the amendments, and you will find the text of the ordinance in your packet, and John and I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Phyllis, very much. This is a public hearing, and again, as we did a while ago, we appreciate your comments if you'd like to speak to these, and would like to allow you three minutes approximately each for anyone who has a question or comment about these. Yes, ma'am. If you'd kindly give us your name and address, please.
My name is Pam Barrier, 4239 West Loy Lake Road. The amendment, 2018 amendment package that was in the paper, has a residential, a rental property inspection, and I don't see it being discussed, and I was wondering why it wasn't discussed. Did the planning and zoning recommend that that be taken out? Because it was talked about at the P&amp;Z meeting, that it shouldn't have been in there to begin with, because it's been covered numerous times in this city. This is the third time.
Maybe we can get an actor?
I can help address that. That was a recommendation in the 2018 plan, and we did not make any changes to that, so it still stays a recommendation along with these updates.
Okay, so if this plan is approved, that is saying that that recommendation is approved? Is the way that we have to look at it, correct?
It's a recommendation, but it's going to need approval from the council to go to resident, to
Okay, well, embedded in the program, that's a big sore spot, and it's been covered numerous times, and I think this is the third time we've seen it come up. The first time, it was tabled due to the opposition, because there was numerous people. The second time, I think this place was packed with people, and
I remember.
we came up with a resolution to have a committee that got together, and it was landlords and city officials, and they came up with an incentive-based voluntary program, which was never implemented. So, I mean, that was, what, three or four years ago that this all took place? So now it is coming up again without any say-so, whether it's mandatory, voluntary, or, you know, we're kind of at a loss of what this program's going to be. And if you approve it, and it's mandatory registration, and mandatory fees for inspections, then that's a violation of our constitutional rights. The city, I mean, it's been in the Supreme Court already.
Yes, ma'am, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate your point very much. Let me just ask our attorney, is there, with the recommendation that is not passing rental registration, is that correct?
The action tonight is just to approve a plan. You know, if you were going to implement that program, that would need its own ordinance.
So we'll have to, we'll have to consider that again. This does not, this does not give the city rental reservations.
Okay, so, let me just make sure, because there's, my fellow landlords are here as well, that you're approving the plan, but you have to have another meeting, another public hearing, in order to institute a rental
Rental registration, yes, ma'am. I just think too much time has passed. I would not be in favor of doing that tonight. We do need to get that group back together. We've lost four years. The city manager who was helping kind of lead that has left us.
Yes.
And we have, you know, I totally think that we should gather that group again, and maybe add new people, but this is not tonight. This is not any kind of rental registration.
Well, it was covered in the packet, and that's what raised our concerns, and that's why we're here, is because we don't want it to go through, because to us, it's a legal issue.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I understand.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
So when it was in that 2018 packet, that was just, it's just the plan of what the city would like to do maybe someday in the future, right? But we didn't change that. That's why, that's kind of what started our first public hearings with that. But this is just, it's still in there, because we didn't touch it, but we covered parts before and after it, and so that's why it was in the big packet, correct?
Right.
So it's still just, it's part of the vision.
So this is moving forward for our vision, not anything, nothing that we're doing tonight.
And it does not get into the specifics, as we have talked with past committees. I was part of this program in 2018, when we put the comprehensive plan together, and it was just part of the overall vision that this may be a mechanism that we can utilize to help, and at that time, our percentage, and I don't know that it's changed, was significant rental units versus single-family ownership. So it was, it's just part of the vision, but it's not a, it's not an actual plan that we're implementing by any means. And same goes for every other recommendation that you just made. We went over all the amendments to it. They are all just visioning items that give guidance to future councils as we implement other, and accept, and review other future projects. So it's just a visioning plan for the city.
We thank you for making that point.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak before this issue? Okay. We missed you.
Jonathan Earnhardt, 110 South Houston, Dennison, Texas. Their plan is really what is trending nationwide on the, like, the neighborhood concept. We're working to do that ourselves on this 100 acres. So we really like that, and a lot of code doesn't really allow that, so moving towards that would be great. But one note, they did do limiting to 450 units. I just wanted to do the wording where it's right, because if we do limiting to the multifamily at 450, if we're on that 100 acres, you know, we'll have a lot of family in there, you know, maybe do it per a certain amount of areas, because if we're doing that, we're trying to add other units, we might have 100-plus acres, and that would really limit that to less than three houses per acre, you know, and limit it out like that. And the other thing was kind of on the rental thing, you know, I know it's something we're not moving towards, so I was wondering if we could just mark that out as the concept plan, or I don't know if you make notes or do adjustments on that. You know, obviously, I think we were all here through that, it was kind of a big deal and not, but put it not towards a goal until we actually have an idea of what we're doing with it, maybe, but those were just my two comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else have a comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing and ask for comments from council.
Even on that 450 unit, that's still not an ordinance tonight saying that you can't, so it's still just that overall vision, but it would have to be its own ordinance with its own public hearing in both P&amp;Z and us to become law.
We're not modifying.
That's correct. What you do tonight with that recommendation doesn't place any ordinance limits on multifamily housing. It's a recommendation to avoid large concentrations that you see in some cities where you might have thousands of apartments in one area. It is a recommendation. You may find a zoning case before you where it makes sense to have 500 units, because that's the size of the land, or a creek separates it from, you know, from the rest of the development. But the overall goal is to have a mix of housing units, multifamily, townhouses, patio homes, and single-family detached.
Thank you.
And I think as far as the comment, you know, in terms of the rental registration, I understand where you're coming from. Not to say that we will or will not implement anything, any version of, et cetera, we don't know at this point, but at the same time, that was put in there by a group that did a lot of work in looking at the future and the vision, and I would say that by just striking it, I think that would be a little callous, you know, I think that we should still leave it in there, because it's still something for consideration. It may look totally different than anything we've ever discussed, but it's just something to keep in the conversation. Once again, don't know what that's going to look like, but I don't think, it does not outline anything specific, it's just a reference to, you know, so we'll keep it, keep it in the conversation for now.
Other comments, questions? Is there a motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to approve the proposed amendments to the 2018 Dennison Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Spiegel, a second by Councilmember Courtrite. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. So we'll go now to item number six, items for individual consideration. And 6A is, we receive a report, hold a discussion, take action on an agreement with Plumber and Associates for Engineering and Design Services for Treatment Plant Expansion at the Dean Ryland Water Treatment Plant in the amount of $5,868,800, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. The item we have for your consideration today is an agreement with Plumber Associates for Engineering and Design Services on expansion to the Dean Ryland Water Treatment Plant. Plumber and Associates has been partnering with the city for over 30 years, doing various utility projects, and tonight, we're lucky enough to have five of them in our attendance. The purpose of this agreement is to engineer and design capacity increases at the water treatment plant using the most advanced water treatment technologies. To explain the conceptual design behind this agreement in a little more detail, and answer any questions you might have, I'd like to welcome Alan Tucker with Plumber.
Thank you, Mr. Pereira. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Urban. Mayor Protem, Council. This first slide here, I'm just going to quickly run through where we are on the timeline for the design of the expansion at the water treatment plant. About a year ago, we was looking at designing the plant through using conventional filtration by adding four additional filters at the water treatment plant. Then around December, we recognized that the growth was much greater than what we had originally accounted on, and through that added growth, we were going to have to increase the amount of water that we were going to bring in from Lake Texoma. So we took an amendment back, a negative change order, if you will, to take out the added filters, and then tonight, we're proposing a contract using membranes to expand treatment capacity to provide salt removal. The contract includes plumber design and detailed design of microfiltration membranes, as well as reverse osmosis membranes. Through detailed design and bidding the project, and there would be two construction phases associated with this, with this design. The schematic shown here, the red-oranges symbols represent Phase 1A, which would be the first construction phase, followed by the second phase that's shown in blue. Here's a proposed project timeline, completing the design in 2023, and the first part of 2024, with the microfiltration piloting, as well as construction beginning in 2024, going into 2025, and ending in the first part of 2026, with the second phase of reverse osmosis following in that, through the next, basically, two years. So this is a, this contract covers five years of effort. With me tonight, I have David Goodall and Lindsay Varner. We'll be glad to take any questions. We'll be glad to take any questions.
Any questions from council? Thank you very much. If there's no other discussion, we will move for a vote for item 6A.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the agreement with Plumber and Associates for Engineering and Design Services for a Treatment Plant Expansion at the Dean Ryland Water Treatment Plant in the amount of $5,868,800 and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Second. There's a motion by Councilmember Spiegel, second by Councilmember Thorne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Going now, going to item 6B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on the amended Dennison Development Alliance fiscal year 2023 budget to amend an existing line item for infrastructure sewer line installation by increasing the budget by the amount of $900,000, which would allow for the simultaneous installation of a water line along highway, along highways 84 and 75.
Good evening.
Ms. Tolsival, how are you?
Good, thank you. Good evening. Dennison City Council approved DDA's budget on September the 6th, 2022. Last month, on March the 6th, DDA presented an amendment to their budget and council did approve. This evening, DDA is presenting a second amendment for additional funds needed for the installation of a water line. This amendment was presented and approved to the DDA Board of Directors on March the 16th. And Tony Kye, president of DDA, is here this evening to speak and to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Kye, welcome.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, Crowley, council. If y'all have any questions about this, I mean, the background's quick. We were going to do the sewer line. We met with city staff, and they want us to go ahead and fund the water line at the same time, so took it to the DDA board. And so that's what we're here for, is to go ahead and meet the needs of the community and add that $900,000 for this water line.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Kye? If not, is there a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the amended Dennison Development Alliance fiscal year 2023 budget as presented.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second for the approval of this amendment to the DDA budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And to item number seven, project updates, hold a discussion regarding the Paw Paw Wastewater Treatment Plant Master Plan. Mr. Pereira, welcome back.
Good evening, again, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Similar to our last council meeting, I'm happy to be here to assist with the presentation of a project update. It's another master plan, but this time we're talking about Paw Paw Wastewater Treatment Plant Master Plan. The effort, this project began in March 2021, and since then, staff has been working with Plumber and Associates on developing the now finalized master plan. Executive summary copy should have been provided to you at tonight's meeting. At the next council meeting, you will get the full master plan version. To provide a little more context on what is included in that master plan, I'd like to, again, welcome Alan Tucker with Plumber and Associates.
Welcome back.
Good evening, again, Mayor Pro Tem and council. This is an area view of the Paw Paw Wastewater Treatment Plant. Back in 1994, there were actually three plants operated at that time. There was Duck Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant as well as Iron Ore. And at that time, those two were decommissioned and all the flows pumped to the Paw Paw Wastewater Treatment Plant. So Plumber did evaluate the current treatment process as well as the structure and capacity of the units. We determined that the existing treatment capacity is 6 MGD. That's the design average flow with a peak two-hour flow of 13 MGD, which occurs during wet weather. And looking at build-out capacity, you can see, we feel like the plant location can accommodate a 10.3 MGD expansion with a peak flow of a little over 22 MGD. Here's pictures of several of the condition of the treatment units. It was originally built back in 1940, so guys, I have to say that the staff's really done an excellent job in maintaining some units that are really past their useful life. The master plan project, the goals was to increase treatment reliability and capacity. And the bullet items on the right-hand side are the individual projects that we're proposing that need to take place over the next few years. And with me tonight, I do have Matt Kirkendall. Be glad to answer any questions I may have.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is an information-only item. Are there any questions from council? If not, we will move to agenda item number eight. In first, pursuant to Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, the council serves the right to convene an executive sessions from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law or to discuss the following. A, consult with attorney on matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules and professional conduct conflicts with this chapter, and or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement for the same, Section 551 dot 071. And under that, we have items number one, confer with city attorney regarding 700 West Main. And item number two, confer with city attorney regarding city of Dennison versus Sherman Pro Auto Glass LLC at all, 397th District Court, Grayson County, Texas. The time is 7:36, and the council is now adjourned to the executive session.